Thank you so much Brenda, and I'll turn to Alicia, the city clerk. And Alicia, could you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Good evening, everyone. Councilman Brockett.
Listen.
Friend.
Here.
Joseph.
Uh huh.
Nego is absent. Swetlick.
Here.
Wallack.
Present.
Weaver.
Here.
Nate.
Here.
Anya.
Present.
Mayor, we have a call.
Thank you very much. As I think you are all aware, we have had a horrific tragedy strike Boulder. We've lost ten members of our community, and we are here tonight to discuss that, to heal, to begin the process of figuring out our next steps together, to hear from the community what you think our next steps need to be. I want to take just a moment and acknowledge the grief that the families of the victims must be feeling. I also want to thank the first responders who responded Monday, both from Boulder Police, one of whose member paid the ultimate price for their response, Officer Eric Tally, and thank fire, and thank all of the surrounding communities who sent first responders to this incident. They saved lives, and they helped apprehend the suspect, which is, of course, critical to our sense of closure and justice. I also want to thank the rest of our staff. The first responders are seen and visible. The rest of our city staff has been working incredibly hard, both to set up for this meeting, to get all of the folks who are here assembled and briefed and ready to do their part, and many other things such as assembling the links to be able to donate to support the victims' families, as well as links to mental health services that we'll discuss more later. So, thank you to our staff for your extremely dedicated service to all of us. With that, tonight, we have just the one subject, and we're going to treat it as a matters item. So, we have invited speakers to speak to us. If all goes well, we will also have staff representative at the vigil. There's a vigil that will be starting at seven o'clock on the Boulder Courthouse lawn. If things go well, we will also hear from a few people who are at that vigil, but at the very least, our staff member Chris Messchuck, the acting city manager, will deliver remarks from the city to that vigil. With that, I am going to turn to the invocation. We are going to set the tone tonight of healing, remembrance, and community, and we're going to do that with a joint invocation from Mary Kate Rojo and Rabbi Fred Green. So, if we could start that recording, please.
Mayor Pro Tim Weaver, city council members, thank you for the opportunity to be with you today and to offer this invocation on the event of terrible violence in the Boulder community a few days ago. I have invited my friend and colleague Rabbi Fred Green of Congregation Har HaShem to join me, because in times of trial, we are better with the support of friends. I encourage all who listen tonight to seek company and counsel if you find yourself struggling to endure. You are not alone. This invocation uses a prayer authored by Rabbi Edith Mencher, modified for this occasion. We apologize in advance for names not pronounced correctly.
We stand in grief with the devastated families in our community.
We weep over the incomprehensible loss of life.
We cry out with shock, confusion, and pain.
We mourn together over this senseless act of violence and destruction.
We remember persons, fathers and mothers, sons and daughters, friends and neighbors, husbands and wives.
Three of them the age of us, a rabbi and a priest, four older, three younger.
Each one known best to those in their near orbits, each one with mysteries not yet revealed.
Let us now hear their names and the smallest portion of their lives.
Tralona Bartkawiak, forty-nine years old, shop manager and organic Boulderite, newly engaged, full of love and light.
Suzanne Fountain, fifty-nine years old, a gardener who shared abundance in leaves of lettuce, an actress, a Medicare genius who will not reach the age to apply for the same.
Terry Leicher, fifty-one years old, a thirty-year King Supers employee, a kind and fierce bagger of groceries, special Olympian and Olympic class friend.
Kevin Mahoney, sixty-one years old, a retired chief operating officer of hospitality and hotels, and almost grandfather who will not welcome this grandchild.
Lynn Murray, sixty-two, photo editor in Cosmopolitan landed in Boulder, Instacart driver, mother, artist, designer.
Ricky Olds, twenty-five, front-end manager, oldest sister, hiker and camper. Her love of independence did not keep her free from being killed in her place of work.
Denny Strong, twenty, an employee, dreamer, and outdoorsman, an aspiring pilot whose high school graduation was just blocks away and two years ago.
Devin Stanisak, twenty-three years old, a son of immigrants, already once a refugee of violence in a war zone, fixer of coffee machines, not yet old enough to rent a car.
Eric Tally, fifty-one, an officer among our heroes in the Boulder Police Department, the Boulder County Sheriff's Department, and the CU Police Department, beloved and loving father, a woodworker, and the first one whose name we knew.
Jody Waters, sixty-five, boutique owner and every shopper's friend on the Pearl Street Mall, a mother and grandmother, last in the alphabet, and the oldest among them, still too young. Belations of each of these persons, for their beloved families and friends, we grieve.
Be with us, God, in this time of sorrow and fear.
Help us, God, to offer comfort to those whose hearts are shattered.
Rekindle hope and trust and courage with us.
Help us to sustain our belief in the promise that even in the most burdensome of times.
Even when we feel most discouraged, love is never extinguished, and light and spirit will prevail.
Help us to rededicate ourselves to building a world that is safer for our children.
Help us to build a world that is safer for all people.
During these difficult days and nights, may we find comfort and peace and hope and light to bear the burdens of broken hearts and a broken world.
Oh, say shalom, b'mravh hu yah, say shalom alenu, ve'al kol yisrael, ve'al kol yoshvei tivell.
May the one who causes peace to reign in the high heavens and the person near us, let peace descend upon us. Amen.
Well, thank you to
Muchas gracias.
Thank you to Reverend
Gracias a Reverendo Reja.
Rabbi Green.
Yeah, Rabbi Ravina Green.
Very good.
Muchas gracias.
So, I think we, I'm hearing an interpretation. Let me double check. Mine should be off, so Brenda, can we make sure that we've got the interpretation on the channel?
Podemos asegurarno de que tengamos interpretación en el canal.
Marina, sorry, you're in the English channel, so let's mute you for now, and you and I will keep working on it.
Very good. One more time, thank you Reverend Rojo and Rabbi Green for supplying that wonderful invocation to start this terrible meeting. I want to pass along, I received the call today from US President Joe Biden, and he expressed his deepest sympathies to all of Boulder, specifically as well to the victims' families, and also called out Officer Tally by name for his heroic efforts and sacrifice that he made. There's more to the conversation that I had with the president, and I will reference that when we speak at the end of the meeting tonight, but I do want everyone in Boulder to know that we have a leader of our country who feels the pain that Boulderites have experienced. He sympathizes with our loss, and he intends to work with us to try and bring change to the laws that govern the weapons that killed the people in our community. With that, I'm going to turn over to the governor of the state of Colorado, Jared Polis, to hear a few words.
Thank you, Mayor Weaver. It was, you know, when you mentioned at the start of the meeting, this is the agenda. Of course, it's all-consuming. What else can possibly be thought of or talked about? As you know, not only do I have the great honor to be governor of the state of Colorado, but I'm a Boulder native, a Boulder resident. And you know what? Many of us knew the victims firsthand, knew people who knew them Boulder. At the end of the day, it's a small, tight-knit community. I have several friends who lost somebody that they cared about, that they knew well at the King Supers killing. But whether you knew some of the, someone who personally or not who perished, this was a blow to the entire community, really. When we see these tragedies happen in different parts of our country, everyone likes to think, that wouldn't happen here. And it happened here, and it happened at a place that many of us have been. I've shopped there, you've shopped there, stopped there when I'm in South Boulder to pick up food, something that we can all identify with. It could be any grocery store, could be anywhere in our state, anywhere in our country. These were ten men and women, just going about their day, like you and me, some of them working, some of them shopping, making a quick trip to grab dinner. And on Monday afternoon, evil manifested, and it cut their lives short. There's, there's going to be a lot of talk in the days and weeks ahead, what could have possibly been the motive or the motivation or why, but there is no motive or explanation that can justify the action or that can relieve the pain of those left behind in our entire community. You know, grocery stores are really a hub of our community, and we have that expectation of familiarity, of safety, and that's why for many of us, this attack feels so personal. That could be any of us at any store at any time. And I want you to know, this tragedy has not just touched Boulder in our state, but I've seen such an outpouring of love and support from people across the country and across the world for Boulder and our residents in our time of need. Earlier today, I stopped by King Supers Table Mesa and saw the ad hoc memorial and paid my respects, laying down a bouquet of flowers, along with hundreds, if not thousands, of other flowers. And I was very heartened to see so many of our fellow Boulderites doing the same. Many brought flowers, made signs, laid down special tokens. Some were friends of people that were lost. And in many ways, just two days after the attack, it still doesn't feel fully real. It's still hard to hard to understand that this happened here. And I want to encourage everyone to give ourselves the space to grieve, the space to be angry, to be sad, to be confused, to ask why, questions that can't be answered, but must be asked. And nothing about what happened Monday is normal, and we must do everything that we can to keep ourselves and one another from becoming desensitized to this pain, even if that seems like the easier choice. It's important, it's important to own this pain and remember what happened. We are familiar with tragedies like this in the abstract sense. We've heard about them, we've read about them, but it came to our community, and it could come to any community. To the ten families, survivors, the friends who are waking up every day without their mother or father, son or daughter, sister, brother. On behalf of the state of Colorado, express our love and condolences. The entire state of Colorado is with you. And the entire state of Colorado stands with Boulder. As Coloradans, we remember Denny Strong, Nevins Stanisak, Ricky Olds, Tralona Bartkawiak, Terry Leicher, Eric Tally, Suzanne Fountain, Kevin Mahoney, Lynn Murray, and Jody Waters. Thank you.
Thank you, Governor. And I will turn next to Senate, Colorado State Senate Majority Leader Steve Fenburn.
Thank you, Mayor Weaver. And thank you for, for having this conversation. This is something that we have all seen happen across the country. I think it became all too normal, right? And this is something so many different communities have experienced personally. And then over the last year, it feels like as nothing was normal, because of this pandemic and our world was turned upside down dozens of different times in different ways. This is something we haven't actually seen a whole lot of as a country, fortunately. The thing that makes me so angry is that it feels like as we get back to normal, as we contemplate being able to go out to a restaurant or do the normal things that we've always taken for granted, unfortunately, that coming back to normal includes seeing headlines of horrific events in the news. That's the part that makes me so angry, is that back to normal has to include that. I think we all want to get back to a level of normalcy. I also think we have an opportunity here to reset and have a difficult conversation of what normal is or what it should be and what is a healthy normal. Clearly, what happened in Atlanta and now what has happened in our community is not normal by any stretch of the imagination, at least not to to any other country, right? So, I guess first and foremost, obviously, my thoughts, our thoughts, and condolences are with the victims and with the families and those that all of the, all of us that have been touched in one way or another by them, their, their their roles in our community, the, just, we've all been touched in one way or another. There's just going to be a long road ahead of grief. For the families, it's going to be an impossibly long road. We have to be there to show up for them. We absolutely need to, at the same time concurrently, talk about what can be done to prevent something like this happening again, and making sure that something good comes out of this. But we need to make sure that first and foremost, our, our role also is to be neighbors, to, to continue to show love and grace and, and be there for the community and for the individuals that are hurting so much today and into the near future. I'm not gonna, I'm not going to get into a lot of policy discussion. I don't think that would necessarily be appropriate. But I will say that I am, I've talked to several of you over the last couple of days. There are going to be continued conversations about what can happen at a state level. Obviously, the, the court ruling around Boulder's policy is top of mind. It has to be part of the conversation. It can't end there, because we know that's woefully inadequate to create a safe community. So, those are conversations that are happening, and more and more so will happen in the forefront as a community, and I am welcoming that conversation. I am eager to be a part of that conversation in any and every way that makes sense or where I can be helpful. Representative Amabley and Representative Hooton and I just had a town hall with several others joining, and we've, we had this conversation about what needs to happen, what can happen, what may happen at the federal level, the state level, the local level, and the answer is that there's obviously not a single solution. But, but that can't keep us from seeking solutions and making, taking those steps that will make our community safer. So, what I guess I, I'm here to say tonight is that to, to implore that, that our community gets tighter than ever, and that our community shows up more than ever. And this is a community that does show up. As city council members, I think you guys are well aware of that, and we need to channel that as a community. Can get out of this and, and build something that is stronger, more beautiful, more resilient, more safe than we've ever been. But at the same time, we all need to think about how we can make sure that this is not a moment that is just another one of these moments in this country. We owe it, I think, to the victims. We owe it to everyone who's touched by it to, to not let this just be another moment and not let this be the return to normal. And so, at the state level, what I can assure council members and the community at large is that we are eager to have those conversations. They are going to be difficult. They are going to be challenging. I can't say with any confidence that, that I know exactly what is going to happen. But we are going to have the conversations. Everything is going to be on the table. And I can assure you that the, the, the delegation from the city of Boulder is going to be in lockstep together to make sure that we do whatever is within our power that is the most effective, most meaningful change that, that we can get done to make sure that we can prevent the next tragedy from happening, including making sure that the city of Boulder has the right to go above and beyond what state regulations exist or will exist after this session. But again, I don't think that is the answer. There is no answer. There is no one solution. It has to be a continued conversation that evolves, because you never get to a place where you can say, great, we passed a bill or we passed a policy, and now there, we have solved this problem. This is something that we have to work on together over time, and many would say it's too soon to talk about any of that, and I get that, and I appreciate that, and I respect that perspective. Personally, and I said this on the Senate floor yesterday, it's, it's obviously too late. It's not a question about is it too soon. It is too late, and we need to do everything we can to make sure that this tragedy doesn't happen again, and that our communities, including Boulder, but every other community in Colorado, is safer, because we can't let this become the return to normal. So, I'll leave it there. Mayor Weaver, council members, others. My door is always open to have these conversations and to strategize and to talk about what comes next. But for now, my, my hearts are with this community, and, and I want to thank you for inviting me and having this important conversation.
Thank you so much, Senator. Much appreciated. Next, we will go to Congressman Joe Nagus, who is here with us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening to all the council members, Mayor Pro Tim, Joseph, and to Mayor Weaver, and to all the folks who are listening in here in Boulder. I wish I was here under better circumstances to, to see you all, but I'm grateful for the opportunity to come by and say a few words, and grateful for you all holding this special meeting to honor the victims that our community lost on Monday night. I know I don't need to tell each of you how devastating the, the events of the past few days have been for our community. I would simply say to you that as I've received calls from the Speaker of the House and countless of my colleagues in the House of Representatives on both sides of the aisle, Republican and Democratic members, they, they each one have offered their condolences to the families who lost loved ones on Monday, and have offered their thoughts and their prayers to our community, and I just hope you all know that the rest of the country is thinking of our community. And as I've talked to my colleagues, I've tried to explain to them, those who haven't been to Boulder before, that it's a small community. It's a strong community, but it's a small one. It's a close-knit community. And the loss of life is unimaginable, but in particular for a community like ours, to lose ten fellow community members, people who were brothers and sisters, neighbors, friends, colleagues, family members, to see their lives cut short, to have such a tragedy unfold here in Boulder County and in the city of Boulder is, it's, it's hard to describe in words. I want to say thank you to the city of Boulder, to the mayor, to every one of you, to your staff, to the Boulder City Police, who are heroes. We all, of course, continue to mourn the service and the sacrifice of Officer Tally. We remember him and his sacrifice, his service will never be forgotten. We mourn his passing. And I want to say thank you to Chief Harold for her strength and the way in which she and so many of the officers in the Boulder Police Department have responded to this tragedy, both during the harrowing events of Monday afternoon and in the days since. We are in their debt. I also want to say thank you to the district attorney, who has done a tremendous job as he works to pursue justice in this case. We are lucky to have such an exceptional person leading our district attorney's office here in this community. Certainly, federal resources will be available. Our office always stands ready and able and willing to help the city of Boulder to the extent that you all have needs as we respond to this tragedy. I'm grateful that so many in the community have come together and are supporting each other during this difficult time. So many mental health professionals here in our community who are helping those survivors. I also want to say thank you to our local press. Again, when I talk about Boulder County being a small community, and the way in which this tragedy is impacting every facet of the city of Boulder, that includes the press that keeps us accountable and that provides readers and citizens across our region with such incredible reporting, and the Daily Camera, Mitchell Byers, all the folks who have been reporting on the terrible events in real time. We're grateful to them, as we are to the business community. And I know John Tayer is on as well from the chamber for their efforts in supporting other businesses in, in, in South Boulder. I, the last time I was here in front of the Boulder City Council testifying was as a citizen, not as a member of Congress. Many of you were on the council at that time. My Director of Community Affairs, who does a tremendous job in our office, was on Boulder City Council, and she authored a measure to ban was on Boulder City Council, and she authored a measure to ban assault weapons. And I testified in support of that measure. I'm grateful to her for her leadership at that time. I'm grateful to the council for stepping up at that time. And I am so frustrated and angry that inaction at the federal level has compelled cities like our own to take such steps because federal policymakers have been incapable or unwilling to do what was required of them, which was to save lives in communities like ours. And to see what unfolded on Monday happen here in our community and to see fellow community members lose their lives in another terrible mass shooting. It it uh it's again difficult to comprehend and so frustrating because it doesn't have to be this way. And I will simply tell you that I've always been a supporter of universal background checks of closing the Charleston loophole of 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 reinstating the federal assault weapons ban, but the events of the past few days have 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 compelled me in a way, and I know many others, in a way that would be difficult for me to describe. And I give you my promise that I will not stop as long as I have the privilege of uh serving this community, representing this community for I will not stop to advocate, uh not stop advocating uh for those measures that I just mentioned. And I intend to come back to this council, I hope, one day soon with the news that those measures are law. In the meantime, again, I would encourage everyone on the council to the extent that we can be a resource to let us know. Our doors, of course, always open. Uh, you all, I think each of you have my cell number and certainly have Jill's as well. I hope you'll reach out to us in the coming days and weeks as uh as we work to heal our community. And again, as we we work to honor the victims of this terrible tragedy. I thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak with you and would would yield back.
Congressman, we look forward that day that you described as well. We would love to to thank you for helping bring us all kinds of gun reform. So thank you. Um, I'll turn next to um Colorado State Representative Edie Hooten. Edie? I thought I saw her. I still see her.
You should be able to unmute now, Edie.
Uh, there we go. Okay, thank you. Um, so oh, my goodness. Let us know. Where to begin? So um
you all, I think each of you have my cell number.
Hang on a second, Edie. Hang on just one second.
Okay.
I hope you'll reach out to us.
I can hear I can hear Joe speaking in the background.
Yeah, I I that's recorded, so.
Work to honor the victims.
And I'm not quite sure how to.
Sorry, I'm I'm looking for how to turn it off. One moment.
Thank you, Congressman. We look forward that day that you described as well. We would love to to thank you for helping bring us
Okay.
all kinds of gun reform. So thank you. Um, I'll turn next to um Colorado State Representative Edie Hooten.
Thank you, uh Mayor Weaver. Um, and I appreciate everyone on this call.
I saw her.
I am
I still see her.
Deeply.
What we have that is unmuted at the moment, um. Unmute now, Edie.
Thank you. Um, so
All right, hold on a moment. I'm going to mute everyone.
So um
All right, so at this point, I've unmuted everyone. I've muted everyone. Um, so interpreters and um council members and Edie, um please unmute as you wish.
Thank you, Brenda. We'll try again. Edie, um, we'd love to hear from you. That day that you described as well, we would love to
I I perhaps it's a problem on my end, um, but I've got um I can hear Sam, you know, like just getting the last
Yeah.
Uh, Mayor Weaver.
Edie, I wonder if you have playing in your background, the live feed of the of the meeting. It's on a slight delay.
Very good. And in the meantime
All right, so um have um Brenda, maybe you and I can talk offline about how how to stop this. So and um and uh Mayor, you can go to someone else.
Very good. We'll do that. So let's very good. Sorry about the technical difficulties. It's the wonder of the Zoom age. So we'll turn now to um Colorado State Representative Judy Amable. Judy?
I thank you so much uh for inviting me to come and talk tonight and thank you all for being here and I, you know, obviously, this is a terrible event and it would be nice if we had been able to come together under happier circumstance. Uh, so I don't want to repeat what other people have said. Um, as a state legislator, I am committed to supporting gun legislation and be that an assault weapons ban at the federal level, at the state level, or removing the state preemption so that every city, town, county in Colorado can do what they want. But I think the gold standard obviously would be to get the federal legislation passed. I want to say that we are so lucky here in Boulder and on this city council to have an incredible champion for gun rights in Council Member Rachel Friend. And um she has really been a leader in this topic. And I'm gonna be co- colluding and collaborating with her on all the gun measures that we talk about because this has been a real passion area for her. And we're so just grateful to have her. So the other thing I want to talk about, so thank you, Rachel, is the other need that we have, which is we are not taking care of people who have serious mental illnesses. And while most people with mental illness are not violent and never commit a crime and are way more likely to be the victims of crime, we, those people are not getting the treatment they need either. So we've had a massive failure. Our state is one of the worst in terms of its commitment to taking care of people who have serious mental illness. And we have agreed that it's okay to simply jail people for mental illness because that somehow is easier for us to stomach than actually putting out the resources that we need to take care of people and to treat people in hospitals and as outpatients and with compassion. And we have to change that. And that's the other thing that I am fully committed to working on. And I hope that I will have all of your support. And since I have this audience, I'm just gonna shamelessly pitch this. I have been working for about a year now with city and county leaders and professionals in the mental health arena. And Councilman Brockett has joined our meetings. We have Sheriff Pelley. We have Michael Doherty. And we had John Taylor and the Boulder Chamber and people from Mental Health Colorado and people from Mental Health Partners, people from the county, and we are gonna put a tax on the ballot for countywide to support mental health resources in Boulder County. And I hope you'll all join me in supporting that. It's not going to be this year. It'll be in 2022. And other counties have done it and they've made really meaningful change. And the county that I think we should all be looking at is Laramo County because they're very similar to us. They have passed one of these measures. And we absolutely need to act on that. And this moment is a moment for us to start thinking about that. And at the State House, too, we have to enact some measures that ensure people get the care they need. So uh thank you for letting me um inter- interject that. And uh I have on all these down items because I'm gonna go to the vigil at the courthouse. And I hope that I'll see some of you there as well. And I really appreciate the opportunity to to come here and speak to you and um, thank you, guys, for all the work you're doing. It really is important and meaningful and particularly right now. So thank you.
Thank you, Representative Amable, very much for that. Um, with that, uh, Edie, do you want to try one more time?
Yes, and I'm gonna try with meaning one more time. So in this conversation that we're having in this very challenging, traumatic event that just happened a little over forty-eight hours ago, as policymakers, you know, we are managing the incredible grief that we are feeling personally and the grief we feel for our community. And this is where I get choked up because when I talk about Boulder and how tight-knit of a community we are and the trauma that we have just experienced, the victims, their families, the employees at King Supers, uh, it's just, it is going to be with us for a long time. And I think we all know that. And in this moment, to recognize that grief and that shock is where we want to be. But as policymakers and city council members included, of course, um, and our our federal representatives and our statewide um partners, we are being called to act now. Do something now. And uh Judy and I have been um in a lot of meetings in the last thirty-six hours about how we act responsibly and not impulsively. What can we do um that's really gonna make a difference, not only for Boulder, but for the state of Colorado? I mean, what happened to us on Monday, every city and town that has experienced that is being re-traumatized. Which is why this is national news. It's just a, it's it's trauma that keeps happening over and over again, but we have to act responsibly and thoughtfully. So what we introduce, and we will be introducing legislation in response to this, but it has to be thoughtful, which is why we're partnering partnering with the Gifford Foundation, with Mom-to-Man Action, with Every Town for Gun Safety, because they have for over a decade have been in the middle of this, and they know better than anyone else what works, what doesn't work, what needs to be done. And so we will partner with them, and that will include Mental Health Colorado and all of our mental health partners, because as Judy, as we all know on this call, who is a leader in um addressing the mental health crisis that we have exacerbated by COVID, we can do it. It's going to be a combination of sensible gun laws and mental health funding and making sure that those funds are directed where they need to go, where they make the greatest impact. So what I w- just want to communicate to everyone tonight is that we are Boulderites. We feel the pain. We take moments, you know, when a reporter calls us and, oh, my God, Judy, how many calls have we been on? Steve? How, I mean, around the world, reporters want to hear from us. And when you talk about your community and the people in your community, it's really hard because the emotions are right here. It's so hard to keep it together. But you have to, and we want to. We do it for our community. But when we talk about action we're gonna take, we can get real clear and real calm real fast. We have partners that we can work with. We have a state administration. We have a federal administration. We have local. We have Boulder County. We are so fortunate to be working in concert with each other and not in conflict with each other. And so Judy, I'll see Judy at the vigil. It's a time for grieving, remembering, mourning, and also a time for action. And I just am very, thank you, Sam, for inviting us to join city council, and I really appreciate the work that city council does. And and we were on a town hall uh just you know, fifteen minutes ago where Sam gave a very meaningful heartfelt recognition to the staff that supports Boulder City Council and the staffs that support the first responders that support King Supers, that support um our you know, those who respond on the front lines to COVID. And I I just, I really appreciate that recognition, uh Sam, that you made because that just amplifies how we are all in this together. So I just thank you for the opportunity to speak to Boulder, and it's just such an incredible honor to serve you always, but especially now.
Thank you, Representative Hooten, very much.